Please call to order, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, and just as for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 11th Township Hillsborough Planning Board meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised accordance to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, AKA Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Weinstein.
Here.
Beccarina.
Here.
Do I have it?
Here.
Delkor.
Here.
Vice Chairman Julian.
Here.
And Chairman Laup.
Here. First order of business, we're going to review deposition of minutes dated April 6, 2017, which is in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members are Mr. Wagner, Mr. Julian, Ms. Beccarina, Mr. Weinstein.
Thank you. We have a motion?
And Mr. Wagner.
We said that right. We have a motion to approve minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 6, 2017.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Beccarina? Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so next, we will have deposition of resolutions on board. First is Neil and Barbara Van Cleef, HRC Associates LLC, File 16 PB17 SRV, which is also in your packet.
The eligible members are the Vice Chairman, Mr. Wagner, Ms. Beccarina, Mr. Weinstein.
I actually have a question concerning this resolution. I remember during the meeting, Mr. Wilkie agreed to meet with some members of the public. I don't know if that actually took place. I don't see it anywhere in the resolution.
I don't think that was a condition, but I think it was an agreement. He made it on the record. It's not a condition of the approval. Is that okay?
Well, I'm just wondering if that has taken place, or if we're going to follow up to make sure that that happens. I know some members of the public were concerned.
Is anybody from the public here regarding this application? Seeing none, so I would imagine if there was some issue, okay. Mr. Ford, does it took place?
Yes.
Mike. Just indicate for the record.
Okay. Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering. I'd like to be smart. It took place. The meeting took place.
Thank you.
With a neighbor right next to the tennis court.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Okay. Thank you, Sally. So, at this point, we'll take with the resolution as written, any nominations to approve or motions to approve, as you say.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve File 16 PB17 SRV.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We will take a roll call, please.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Ms. Beccarina?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Thank you. Second on the docket is Daniela Lavatino, File 16 PB13 MRV, preliminary and final major site plan, Seeburg Variance approval for her lot. Packet's in your paper.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman and yourself, Mr. Julian, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Delkor, and Mr. Weinstein.
Okay.
I think I mentioned Mr. Wagner.
Yes, we did, yes. We have a motion for approval on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Application 16 PB13 MRV.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sam. And vote, please.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
And Chair Laup.
Yes. Okay, so, next, I'm going to ask for anyone in the public that has, because there's no planning board business, we skipped that, and there's no special committee report, so, anyone in the public that's not on the agenda today that might have something to bring to the public, and I'll see you in the back. Please come up, state your name, address for the record, not that we don't know who you are.
Good evening. Michael Sopko, S-O-P-K-O, 2127 Camplain Road. I hear about our friends at Coparts again.
Can you raise the mic up a little bit for me?
Or you can take it out. Is that better?
That's good. Just try and get as close to you can to it.
Okay. On March 31st, when I arrived home, I found that their trucks, well, not their trucks, but trucks leaving Coparts facilities, has run over my lawn yet again. This time, the trench is approximately 15 to 20 feet long and four to five feet onto my property. I have no recourse. I have to fix this by myself. I don't see why I should have to suffer with having to fix my lawn every time one of these trucks run over it. Last time I was here, I wanted something more substantial than some stone put at the end of my property.
I did see those ruts recently. I was coming down your property, and unfortunately, I saw them, and I shook my head as I drove past your property. Did you approach them, being Copart?
Yes, I went to Coparts immediately upon my arrival home. They said that they would have to look at their video camera, see if they had any evidence of who might have done it, and when they responded, they said they couldn't determine that.
And they offered no help?
They offered no assistance of any kind.
Michael? David?
As Mr. Sopko knows, he has been in touch with our office on several occasions, and our zoning officer has responded as often as we can. Mr. Gorman, the zoning official, and Mr. Bellinger, the assistant township engineer, have made an appointment with Copart for next week to basically perform what we're calling a sort of a periodic checkup. So, they're going to go through all the conditions of the resolution. They'll look at tapes, they'll look at all the various things that they were supposed to accomplish, and we'll see what comes out of that meeting, but it will be next week. I know you have Patrick's phone number. Give him a call, see how that goes. I'm not sure which day next week, but if, he'll be out tomorrow, but if you call him on Monday, you can find out when that meeting's going to take place.
Okay. And then, just so that the board knows, the gate was supposed to only be open from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. It's been open as early as 6:45 in the morning. There have been tow truck deliveries before 8:00 o'clock, and when we had that snowstorm, they were in plowing snow before 5:00 a.m. in the morning, and they were not open that day.
Okay. And I'm sure you provided all that to township?
Yes, Mr. Gorman has all that.
In general, and I'll say in general, are the hours being adhered to, especially in the evening, or you find that there's?
No, the 11:00 curfew is fairly good. The only problem I see is when they come in at five minutes before 11:00 and don't leave until five minutes before 12:00. But that has been far and few in between also. As far as the PM curfew, it's a lot better.
Okay. All right, we'll see what comes out of the session that these guys will have next week, and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you very much for your time.
We appreciate your- Thank you, Mr. Sopko. Your patience and keep coming back with us. Any other business on the floor, on tonight's agenda? Okay, so, we're going to skip on the, down to the last topic here first before the consideration ordinances due to, we have some professionals here, and not to tie them up with any extended discussion, so we're going to go to the Pearson Properties LLC, 15 PB05 MSRV, 2017-WALL, Lot 150109, Lot 220, 340 Valley Road. Applicant seeking amended minor site plan approval for proposed sound wall. As per a condition of a prior approval, resolution dated January 7, 2016, on property in the GI zoning district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Alex Fisher, attorney with the law firm Savo Shaw Gillespie Grautnick &amp; Fisher. I'm here tonight representing Pearson Properties LLC in this application for amendment to the minor site plan approval. Just for some background, on January 7, 2016, this board approved a minor site plan and associated bulk variances to convert the existing concrete plant on the property to an asphalt plant and convert the non-permitted residential home on the property into a support office for the asphalt plant. As part of the resolution, the board required that the applicant meet state and local daytime, state and local match now, daytime and nighttime noise limits, and provide affirmative proof of noise compliance. And the board also recognized in its resolution that in addition to the localized barriers and equipment silencers necessary to meet the daytime noise limits of 65 decibels, that, quote, "barriers or additional silencing measures would be needed to comply with nighttime limit of noise of 50 decibels." And that was paragraph 48 of the findings of fact and resolution. So, as you'll hear over the past year and a half, Pearson has moved steadily forward with the construction of the asphalt plant and will soon be seeking a temporary CO for daytime operations and to conduct the noise studies, as was discussed in the prior hearings. They believe that the plant will meet daytime noise limits as designed or only with minor additional silencers on the equipment itself, but in accordance with the prior testimony, Pearson's acoustical engineer, Jack Zibura, has determined that a sound wall is necessary to meet the nighttime sound limits, and therefore, we return to the board for approval of an amended minor site plan showing the location and construction of the sound wall, in order that the applicant may fully comply with the conditions of the January 7, 2016 resolution. So, I plan to present two witnesses this evening, Mike Ford and Jack Zibura. Mr. Ford is a project civil engineer, and he'll testify regarding the location of the wall and buffering. And Mr. Zibura, the project's acoustical engineer, will testify regarding necessity of the wall and noise compliance and about the wall itself. I also have with me Pearson Properties Director of Operations, Kurt Mitchell, who is here to answer any questions that the board may have. That cannot be answered by Mr. Ford or Mr. Zibura. So, if there are no questions, I'd like to call up Mr. Ford and have him sworn in.
Please do.
Yes, I do.
Name and-
Michael Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey.
We'll accept your credentials. You've been before the board plenty of times.
Thank you, Sir Chairman. So, Mr. Ford, can you explain to the board the amendment to the minor site plan?
Yes, and I have exhibit. It's the actual site plan, but it might be easier than looking at your data.
Sure.
Just so you know, we should mark it A2, because I pre-marked another exhibit as A1.
Okay, we'll mark it A2, then.
I have a sticker.
Tag that with A2, please.
This is actually already a matter of public record. It's the same plan that was submitted as part of the application. I'm sorry. I'm talking while you're trying to write. Okay. Specifically, the subject of this evening's meeting is the sound wall that's being erected or proposed to be erected across the front of the property. I'll say across the front of the property, but it's actually predominantly 180 feet from the right-of-way, which puts it over 200 feet from the edge of pavement of Valley Road. It would be a proposed sound wall for mitigation measures of nighttime noise levels during the operation of the facility, and it's primarily due to an existing residential use directly across from the site on Lot 5, which is also in the GI zone, but just happens to be an existing residential use that were required to meet those residential standard nighttime operation noise levels. The wall would be 18 feet high, which is approximately the height of a ranch house or a single-family, you know, single-story residential dwelling, and that would be comparable to the existing dwelling that's on the property that, as was stated in the introduction of the application, the prior approval included a conversion of that existing residence on the pre-existing concrete facility plant to be converted to a support office for the proposed asphalt plant. The wall's approximately 710 feet long. It starts at the existing driveway on the easterly side of the property and runs along an existing operation paved area to that point where it's 180 feet from the right-of-way and then traverses in the westerly direction and ends in an existing wooded area. Actually, a portion of the wall would be extended within that existing wooded area, which would provide for landscape mitigation measures. If you've been by the site, the access driveways on the east side of the property, the existing residential, single-story ranch is approximately in the middle of the property, and then on the western portion of the property toward Alton Road is cedar trees, and this wall would be, you know, partially obscured from view from Valley Road by those existing cedar trees. There's also a proposed evergreen planting immediately along the right-of-way where those cedar trees don't continue. That would be on either side of that existing ranch house on the property and then terminating at the existing driveway. That was part of one of the conditions of the prior approval, and that's already on the plan and was part of the approval. We received a May 2, 2017 review memorandum by Mazer Consulting, Mr. White's office. There's some four comments in it. We'd agree to any approval this board would grant to satisfy all four of those comments to Mr. White's satisfaction. One of the comments relates to drainage with regards to the proposed sound wall. That wall is to be erected basically perpendicular to the contours, so the drainage doesn't run from one side of the sound wall to the other naturally today, and it wouldn't after the wall, so there's no need to provide for drainage through or under the wall. The wall would go down to the grade surface. And then, also, there was a request to provide some additional evergreen plantings immediately adjacent to the wall to break up the mass of the wall and provide some additional buffering to complement the buffering that's already to be planted along the right-of-way, and the applicant would agree to do that. There's another comment in the review memorandum to change out or provide an alternate planting species for one of the evergreen plantings that's proposed, and we would agree to do that as well. Sure. Yeah, there's another comment in Mr. White's memorandum to provide for a berm to enhance the effectiveness of the landscaping along Valley Road, and the applicant would agree to do that. There was also a suggestion to provide for a berm for those plantings immediately adjacent to the wall in order to prevent that other comment, which is the drainage toward or under the wall. We would propose to just do those plantings immediately adjacent to the wall without a berm, but we defer to Mr. White's office to address that to his satisfaction. I think that was it for the engineering.
Okay. Mr. White?
I have no further comments.
Do they indicate how high the berm would be that you would put in there? I just can't tell that from the plan.
It's not shown yet.
Not shown yet.
I asked for one, that's one. It would be a condition.
Right.
Your plants would probably be 10 feet tall. I think two to three feet, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the sight line, you know, with being as far as it was, you don't really need to get it too much higher to get over.
Right.
No.
We're going to look at that a little further detail.
All right.
I think we could fit that size berm in there without expanding the limit of disturbance anymore to disturb any other vegetation, which I'm sure would be part of the goal, not to cut down any more trees.
And that plantings, I see, in the conservation easement, and how far is that off the road?
There was a condition in this zone to provide for the conservation easement along the frontage. I believe it's 25 feet wide, the conservation easement.
So, it's far enough off the road that snow plows or whatever is not going to damage those?
Oh, the proposed plantings would be on our property, yes, yes. Yeah, that would be far enough off the road, yes. There actually was a right-of-way dedication as part of the property prior approval, so we got a 40-foot half width right-of-way from the center line of the road, so it's considerable distance off of Valley Road.
Okay. Any other questions, board?
What's the lifespan of the wall? Is it wood?
Yes.
So, is there, like, a lifespan in terms of aesthetics where it starts, you know, deteriorating? You got to replace it, or you got to upkeep it, or things like that?
I don't know the answer to your question regarding the lifespan. Perhaps the next witness would be able to address that. You know, that wall's proposed in consultation with the acoustical engineer that's involved in this project. I know there is a warranty with the wall. 25-year warranty, told by Mr. White. We provided some literature, manufactured literature with the wall, correct? That was part of your application package?
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? Next witness, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Mr. Zibura? If I could just have you sworn in. Jack Zibura, Z-Y-B-U-R-A. Yes. Could you give the board the benefit of your expertise in the field of acoustic engineering?
Sure. I'm a project manager with Lewis Goodfriend &amp; Associates. We're acoustical consulting engineers. I have a professional engineering license in New Jersey. I'm also board certified by the Institute of Noise Control Engineers. I've been working for Goodfriend for about eight years now, and I've testified on this applicant before.
We'll accept your-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just to get this out of the way, I'd like to distribute, this is Exhibit A1, which is our second exhibit. If you could just let the board know what this is, Mr. Zibura?
Sure. And some of these are probably in the brochures you have. These are just a page of one of Plywall's brochures of sample pictures of these walls in the field.
All right, so, as part of your role as the acoustic engineer in this project, you have reviewed the plant and the noise requirements?
Yes.
And you determined that this wall is necessary to meet those nighttime noise limits?
Yes, necessary to meet the nighttime limits across the road at that residential use.
And is this the smallest and least intrusive means of complying with those limits on this property and this plant?
Yes, we looked at multiple locations and distances from rows, multiple heights, and this was kind of the sweet spot of the lowest height that would still be effective. That's why it's located where it is, at 18 feet high.
And but for this one non-permitted, single-family home in the middle of the heavy industrial district, would this even be necessary?
It would not.
All right, that's why you have to meet the residential noise standards?
Correct, which are much more stringent than commercial or even an industrial zone.
All right. If you could, I know there were some questions, I believe, from Mr. Julian, I guess regarding the makeup and the lifespan of the wall. If you just want to go into discuss what it is?
It's a prefabricated wood panel system. The posts go in the ground, and then they kind of slide in the wooden panels. They're probably three to four inches thick, insulated wood, treated for exterior environments. They do come with a warranty, and you can certainly repair panels if necessary along the way.
And have you used this type of material successfully in other projects for sound mitigation?
Yes. My company has projects dating back to the 80s at least, and those walls are still up and doing their job.
And based to a reasonable degree of certainty in your field of your expertise, acoustic engineering, you believe this wall will allow the applicant to meet the nighttime noise limits for this property, at the property across the street?
I do.
All right. And just to make sure it gets in the record, you're familiar that the plant is substantially completed now in the property and that they'll be going in for a CO shortly?
Yes.
And you will be performing the noise studies for that, for the temporary CO for daytime operations to begin with?
Yes, we will.
All right. I don't have anything further from Mr. Zibura, if there's any questions from the board.
So, there was no impact to the daytime measurements within the allowable limits?
We expect to be within the allowable limits with the noise control that's either coming with the plant or a couple of small things we might have to do to individual equipment.
Not with the wall?
Not with the wall. The wall, we don't need that until we have to meet nighttime.
And I'm not sure if this will work, if you're the right person, but the fundamentals of the timing of the, sort of, the hours at night are still limited. There's been no change in the anticipated evening hour production that would warrant?
I can bring up Mr. Mitchell, and he can answer that, if you want to come up. I won't answer for him, but I believe it has to do with that jobs from the state occasionally require you to be able to produce in the evening. Go ahead.
Say your name and swear in.
Kurt Mitchell. Yes, I do.
And, Mr. Mitchell, could you give your relationship to Pearson Properties?
My title's Director of Operations. I handle-
Micphone closer to the mouth, please. Thank you.
I handle the permitting processes for any of his proposed operations. I see that he stays in compliance with those that's in operation.
There's nothing that, make sure you hold it up. There's nothing that's fundamentally changed in your intent to have this as a primary, almost exclusively daytime plant, just that you need the ability for contracts to occasionally operate at night?
That's correct. The only time we would run this plant at night is if it's mandated by the DOT or the county. Sometimes, a job must be done at night for traffic purposes. They just feel it's less impacting on the traffic. That's the only time that that plant would run, when mandated by the job itself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I may?
Sure.
I'd like to direct your attention to my memo of April 28 on the second page. I included all of the findings, in fact, from the original resolution of January 7 related to noise on the site, and I just would like you to address particularly Number 48, 49, where there was testimony that there would be, for instance, additional silencing measures on the site, on each piece of equipment perhaps, stack silencers, et cetera. Does the sound wall replace any of that, or do you still intend to include the other?
It does not. We do intend to still do localized sound barriers and some additional equipment on the processing equipment.
So, is it belt and suspenders, really, for the?
It's kind of the wall handles part of it, and the individual components handle part of it.
Yeah, and just for the board's information, I did contact Norm Dotty, who was the board's special noise consultant on the original application, and I told him, he said, "Well, what are they putting up?" I said, "Plywall," and he said, "That is a pretty well-accepted industry-standard plywall."
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions? Just the, when they installed this wall, the pylons, are they pounded in or drilled, just from the standpoint of noise?
I'm not sure.
You don't know? An impact?
Do you know the answer to that, or?
Yes.
Everyone, come up. This is Mr. Mitchell.
It's a typical post with siding.
Yeah, but the posts, are they pounded into the ground, or they drilled and poured?
They drilled. They put them in loose stone, like a three-quarter inch clean stone.
Okay.
It's the design of the wall itself, but I believe, because of the size of the wall, they go down about six to eight feet, and the diameter of the hole that the stone will be around is, it's either four feet or six feet. I don't remember the exact dimension, but it would be installed per the manufacturer's standards. But it's loose stone, is what they put in.
Do they need to have that inspected as their building, since they're doing footings and stuff? Would you know?
Whatever permits you need from the building department, I'm sure you'd go for, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That would all be signed by a professional engineer as well.
I don't think we have anything else. Thank you.
For Mr. Zibura and for-
When would you expect to do the wall?
I don't know if-
Why don't we just bring him up?
Stay here.
To stay.
Once the township, if the township were to approve this wall, I would- Once the town, if the township were to approve this wall, I would issue a purchase order to the wall manufacturer. They say about 60 days to produce the material. So let's say 10 weeks from now it approves, it comes to the site. Pearson is a large construction firm. We would install the wall ourselves. I would say roughly 90 days from now the wall would be in place if it were approved.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think that's it for...
Nothing else from me?
Anything else? Okay. Does the board have any other questions regarding the application and the wall, the berm plants, or anything like that? We have any open motion for public for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so any questions on the testimony given by any of these witnesses on this application? This would be the time. I don't think that's why they're really here, giving the opportunity. Okay, seeing none. Motion to close public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we are looking, it's really, is this a, looking to approve the wall, David?
Approve the amended site plan.
The amended site plan? Okay. So we have a motion to approve the amended site plan with the new sound wall as just provided for Block 15109, Lot 22340, 15 PVO5 MSRV. Motion?
So moved.
So moved, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Yes.
Baccarina?
Yes.
Delkport?
Yes.
Mr. Chair Gullian?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. You okay this could go, or do you need a breaker or something?
One, two, or three, they're first. Give them an order. Yeah.
Okay, so now we're on the consideration of ordinances. First one is the amendment to the GA Zone Extended Care Facility. That's in your packet, Mr. Maskey.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first ordinance for your consideration is pretty straightforward. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Extended Care or Senior Care Complex on Amwell Road. It's the Avalon Assisted Living Facility, the Bridgeway Rehab Center, the Pilgrim River Memory Care Facility, which was just approved by the Board of Adjustment recently. The owners of the complex have requested that Extended Care Facility be added as an additional permitted use within the zone, the GA Zone. It is permitted right now in the Gateway C Zone and in the Highway Service Zone. Because it's not a permitted use, each of those three facilities have had to come in as use variances. That complex right now pretty much constitutes the core, the predominant core of the zone. So it actually does make some sense, in my opinion, to add that as an additional use. They do have plans for extending the campus beyond those three facilities. You can see from the list of uses, it is in keeping with, it's a mixed-use zone, really more or less a commercial zone. And as I say, the complex really does make up the core of the zone. So rather than going ahead in the future as one use variance after another for a use that really is consistent with the context they have requested, and we are suggesting that we just add a 12th-use Extended Care Facilities, which is already defined in the ordinance as one or more residential structures which incorporate healthcare services for the long-term care of the residents, including assisted living, nursing homes, and rehabilitation facilities. So it really describes what they're already doing there. One last note, if you, eventually the Township Committee were to approve this, we would suggest adding a parking standard, one parking space for every three beds, plus one space for each employee, which is what the standard is now in the Highway Service Zone. There is a facility being constructed presently on 206, which followed this same standard. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about what it is. If the board desires, we could send this up to the Township Committee for their consideration.
I think it's just already being there. I think it's just a pretty easy amendment to an existing use there. It's already there, cleans it up a little bit. If anybody else has any comment?
No, I agree. It's an easy amendment. I think we should move forward.
Go ahead and make the motion to move this forward up the food chain to the committee. We have motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Samstein?
Yes.
Baccarina?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Delkport?
Yes.
Mr. Gullian?
Yes.
Yes. All right, so there's two, other ones is proposed Affordable Housing Zone on two different blocks. We're gonna do the third one first, which is Block 202, Lot 4.
No, Mr. Chairman, I'd like the second one.
The second one? Okay, I stand corrected. We're gonna go this middle one first, so Block 180.01, Lot 31, 32, 33, 39, and 41.
Mr. Chairman, as the board may or may not be aware, one of my other hats here in the township is that I am also the Township's Affordable Housing Council. As the board and the township and pretty much everybody in the state of New Jersey is aware, there is ongoing obligations for Hillsborough Township and many other municipalities to meet their affordable housing obligations. We are currently now in the midst of litigation relative to this with a number of landowners and developers within the township who have sought intervention relative to the township's plan above and beyond that of the Fair Share Housing Center. We are proposing this evening two ordinances related to two separate properties within the township, of which there have been discussions, no formal applications before this board or any other. And in order to get the process moving for the purposes of addressing the township's obligations, we have brought before you two ordinances. The first one relates to the lots in what is being referred to, I believe, as the MF ID Zone. It relates to a property on the southern end of town, near the Montgomery border, which would allow for, up to 465 total units, of which 112 would be affordable housing, of a 30% maximum impervious coverage with significant open space, still possible relative to the ordinance itself. The ordinance clearly sets forth the various standards that the township is proposing related to the way the site would be potentially developed. It would require ingress and egress off of Route 206. There would be an emergency access off of Tara Drive, but it would be emergency access only. There would be no road, per se, off the site onto Tara Drive. And that this property will, the proposed zoning would allow for the possibility of an application that would continue to address the township's needs with as limited a situation as possible. The law requires a minimum 20% set aside. The ordinance proposes a slightly larger than 24% set aside. When I'm talking about set aside here, that's Affordable Housing Obligation. We would ask the board to consider reviewing same and the possible approval of such, if not at this evening's meeting, at the June 1 meeting, to be forwarded onto the township so that we can move the process along. We are in the midst of getting direction as well from the court's special master, as well as the court's counting master on this issue, so...
Just one note, Mr. Bernstein used the word approval. Just so everybody knows, the planning board does not approve the ordinance. You would be approving recommendations to the Township Committee. This would not become an ordinance until the Township Committee takes it up for consideration, introduces it, comes back to the planning board for a formal comment. They would then send that back to the Township Committee, where on a second hearing, they would decide whether or not to approve it. So we use the word approval, not that this would be an approved ordinance either tonight or at the June 1 meeting. It's just comments coming, initial comments, not the formal comments, per se, the statutory comments. It's the initial comments coming from the planning board to the Township Committee. So just want everybody to understand that. This is the beginning of the process, not the end by any means.
So it's all... Nope. We'll have a public comment. We're just trying to let people know who are here that this is not, this is not going to be an amended, or any by way or shape or form of a plan tonight, nor in the next foreseeable short term. So you have plenty of time to come back and revisit and re-comment. So first thing...
The ordinance would, if ultimately approved, would allow for the possibility of an application before this board at a time in the future.
Correct. Well, we gotta bring you up to the mic, because you gotta come on. So, not yet. We'll give you your turn, so. Obviously, there's a lot of people here, so we gotta do it in order, but it has to be on camera, so we can't have people barking from the pews, so to speak, okay? So the first, business of any comment from anybody on the dais, because I'm sure there's gonna be plenty coming to us from outside it.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest, if there are members of public who are gonna come up, that we allow them to sit in the chair and speak into the mic, rather than talking from the standing mic? Might be easier for them.
So also, please, when you speak into the mic, keep the mic close. It's a short-range mic, so, almost like a rock star, put your mouth right on it. So our guy here can get a good thing, so...
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
What, Mr. Bernstein, what's the current state of our obligation at this point?
The question was, what's the current state of the township's obligation?
The current state of our obligation is we are in conversations with both the Fair Share Housing Center, various developer intervenors, as well as the court's special master, Elizabeth McManus, relative to what our ultimate obligation will be in an attempt to try to resolve it with as few additional units as we can attempt to provide. The township has had an ongoing process of building affordable housing throughout this period, which is now drawn out nearly 20-plus years already, and would have to go through 2025. But we do not know our ultimate number. We are trying to resolve that as part of this overall process. Yeah, if I might, just so everyone's clear, you know, this is five years ago now, maybe even longer. There was, at the prior round, we had...
A lot longer than five years.
Seven, whatever, maybe now. The township put forth a compliant plan with the obligations that we had. We were significantly able to reduce the number of units that would be required by a number of different projects, that we were able to develop certain credits, two-for-one bonuses, a number of alternatives. And we had a fully compliant plan with what the co-re requirements were, and we worked that out with the court master. But the new round is now in, has been presented. There is still a lot of confusion and litigation going on around that, but we still have to ultimately figure out what that number will be that will be provided to us through, as councilor noted, through the Fair Share Organization, as well as ultimately approved by our court master. And that will be the obligation that we need to comply with. So the process is one that I think none of us are happy about, but it's one that we have an obligation to move forward in a compliant manner to ensure that we're fulfilling our obligations under the affordable housing requirements. So this is just a process, a step in the process to get us there. And there will be many more steps along the way, not only for this property, but for many others.
Thank you. So what we'll do is we're gonna start on this side of the room, okay? And we'll go from the front to the back, just so I have an order. And then what you do is you're gonna come up and sit down. And for your first time here, if some of us have been here before, but you're gonna state your name and your address. That's all we need. That's the full name and address, and spell your last name, and then go ahead and make your comment, okay? So we'll start with the front room. Mr. Ford, I guess, no, it's the next row, no. So third, you have one, you had a comment? Come on up. Have a seat. And move the mic as close as you can.
Good evening, board. My name is Glenn Watson, W-A-T-S-O-N. Reside at 22 Arthur Road in Hillsborough.
Thank you, sir.
Question for the board. This, none of the residents, to my knowledge, knew of this meeting was gonna take place tonight. It was sort of found out through social media and just through word of mouth as to the amendments that want to be done, proposed to that, the lot in question. For me personally, my property is the closest to the property line. You'll see that on the maps. Again, it's 22. And to my knowledge, I believe all the residents are supposed to be notified when meetings pertaining to this are held? Or is this, you know, kind of a secluded type of procedure?
So, may I?
Yeah.
The requirements for notice within 200 feet start once the ordinance has been introduced, and there is notice provisions that have to come from the township. The preliminary discussions at this point do not require notice yet.
Aren't you amending the current zone to support this new project?
If the governing body introduces the ordinance, at that point, they will be changing the zone, and notice will be necessary. The same as notice would be necessary if an applicant came before the board. It's similar to what we were indicating earlier, that this is not an approval, nor will there be any amendment to the process tonight. This is simply a recommendation from this board to ultimately put it to the Township Committee.
Obviously, you could see that there is probably a vast amount of concerns for fellow residents, so...
But we just want to make sure we're complying with the notice provision.
Thank you, Mr. Delkport. Thank you, Mr. Loppen. Thank you. Anyone in that row? Okay, next row back.
Tom Laplaca, LAP, LACA, 46 Arthur Road. I just, again, as Mr. Watson said, we all just learned about this. It seems, you know, we're kind of blindsided. So I understand we're changing. My question is, who is planning this? Is there a developer planning this, or is the township planning this?
The township is ultimately responsible for the planning vis-à-vis the ordinance and the zoning. There has been a prospective developer that we have been in communications with. If the matter moves forward, the developer may bring an application before this board if it ultimately is approved. If it's not, then they won't come forward with at least the plan in accordance with that zoning.
All right, so, but the number of units, is that, that was the township that just came up with this?
The number of units is part of a overriding discussion we've had with a number of developers on a number of pieces of property, of which the township is attempting to maximize the number of affordable units on as few pieces of property as we can agree with based on the size of the property.
Okay. Can, excuse me, some of this affordable housing, can this be over 55?
There may be considerations for that, either here or elsewhere. The laws unfortunately do not favor, right now, the so-called age-restricted housing vis-à-vis affordable, but it is conversations we have had with this applicant and others.
Okay, but, so, the numbers with the age-restricted, can the lower income or the affordable housing part be that, so it's 200-something units or 300 units, a regular and 100 and something? You know, I don't remember your numbers. Right. Could those numbers be age-restricted?
Could.
Okay, can we ask for that consideration?
It's part of an overall consideration.
Okay, and then I just ask, again, this is, I know this is early. It seems there's a proposal... It seems there's a proposal on the, both sides of 206 at Mountain View. We're also, we have the bypass coming in at Mountain View. We just opened up the ballpark on Mountain View. This is a lot of change in one spot, and I just asked the township to really consider how much traffic we're putting out at one spot. So, I know with these proposals, you come up with traffic engineers, or come up and, you know, of course, whoever's paying them tells them what they wanna say, but nobody could foresee, I mean, putting 400 or 600 units on that intersection with the ballfield and also the bypass, this could be a big problem. We just did everything to fix traffic on 206. All right? Just like, you consider that, please.
Fair point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next aisle, on the left.
I live on 26 Arthur Road. I'm neighbors with these folks.
Spell your last name, please.
C-A-B-R-A-L.
Thank you.
I am a nurse by trade. I don't know what I'm talking about. All I know is I live in this community. I work really hard. I'm a nurse. I, I give my heart and soul to people. I used to work in this town, and I had to leave because I didn't make enough money to pay taxes. So, now I drive 55 miles four nights a week and almost get in an accident every morning driving home, so I can come home to Hillsborough, where I can raise my kids. One of my kids has disability, and I choose to stay in this town. It would be so much easier for me to live in North Jersey, but it's junky up there, and it's gonna be junky here soon. That sign is not gonna be up here much longer, and it's gonna be the truth, one of the best places to live in America. We are selling this town off, and it's, it's despicable. I don't know what I'm talking about. Again, you folks are the experts, but I know when something doesn't feel good, and I know when something isn't right, and I know that these fine folks behind me, some of them have lived here, they're, they're aging retirement, and they're gonna get pushed out of this community. I don't understand why the township is doing this. I don't even know why people can't look me in the eye right now.
So, can I tell you why we do it?
I would love to be informed.
So, as I tried to tell you before, we have legal obligations dictated to us by the state of New Jersey, under the affordable housing requirements dictated by the state. If you have an issue with it, I would suggest you call your legislators, and you go march in Trenton and tell them, why do we think we need this many affordable housing units throughout the state of New Jersey? Every municipality has an obligation.
To shove it all in one spot?
Well, it's not all in one spot, though. This is just a portion of what we're doing.
Well, this seems like, this seems like, and you folks can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like a large amount is being put in one spot. I think the gentleman over here said it's a little bit more than the norm.
So, there are a number of, of proposals that are being looked at throughout the municipality. They're not all in this location. This is certainly a sizable one, but at the end of the day, we've got a requirement that, that we need to fulfill, that obligation, to have a plan in place, because what, here's what happens if we don't. If we don't develop a plan that sort of minimizes the use of, of our space effectively, what ends up happening is, the courts will say, you do not have a plan to meet your obligation, and they will allow the developers to do what they choose, which is what we want to avoid.
And why wasn't there a plan in place when we built Beazer Homes and these billion-dollar homes? Why is this now trickling down?
We have, we have, there's already an affordable, we already have, I, I can't even tell you how many affordable units we have in town. Every development that goes in has a set aside for affordable units.
Well, this seems like a lot, and some other things to consider that's going on is, you know, you're gonna have, am I wrong or right? You can correct me, that there's gonna be group homes and things like this on the proposal? Yes? No?
In terms of this project, there may be, there may be a handful of special needs units.
So, traditionally, by having group homes, emotionally disturbed individuals usually have police calls quite frequently to them to have transports to hospitals.
Ma'am, this town just recently approved a group home development that frankly, we think is going to be one of the models here in the state. For such, I would not agree with your characterization that somehow special needs adults generate more law enforcement calls than other developments, and the number of potential special needs units here are going to be relatively minimal.
But, if you're putting more housing, you're gonna need more police, and I wonder if the planning board is planning on that? Are we planning on what the school systems are gonna have to absorb with more people in that area? What's the plan for that? I mean, we're planning, but are we planning for the effect that happens when you shove all these people in one spot? Because that's Woods Road School District. Where are all those people gonna go?
There will be, first of all, they're not all go, assuming they are built, and again, we're ahead of the game here. It's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to happen over a short period of time, and the township and the Board of Ed and the planning board and everybody else will continue to deal with the issues as we have been dealing with for the last 40 years here in this township regarding affordable housing obligations. This is not something new. This is not something the township has never dealt with. This is not something the township has not had to address over periods of time, and to the extent those items are gonna have to be addressed, the governing body and the Board of Ed are gonna have to address them.
Well, with all due respect, I've heard that the high school has been, been talked about being expanded and doubled up for years, and it doesn't happen. So, I don't know housing, I don't know how much is considered a lot, but 400 and, I don't know how many houses in one spot seems like a lot. I mean, it seems-
Well, you're missing the point, I guess, is that if, for example, that we decide not to put it at your spot, we have to put it somewhere in the town.
I understand that.
So, the impact for the town is the same. It's just where that makes the least amount of impact is what the plan is that we're trying to deal with. Whereas, we're, instead of taking a bunch of little communities and putting them in people's backyards, trying to cluster them together to minimize what we have. So, I'm not saying that, what you're asking is how the impact to the school system. The school system's gonna be impacted the same because all these people have to come here. It's just where they're gonna be. The state's telling us, we have to have this many homes, or plan for this many homes, and if we don't, then we're at the, at the whim of the builder, and then you really don't want that to happen.
So, I don't, quite frankly, I don't want any of it to happen.
Well, unfortunately, this is, this is the state of New Jersey right now. We don't, we are, they've been fighting this for years.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not saying I disagree with you. My point is, we have an obligation to adhere to the requirements that are being placed on us by the Affordable Housing Act.
Well-
And if you, if, if that is your concern, I would suggest you, you go talk to somebody down in Trenton, because they're the ones that can, can stop it tomorrow.
Well, that's, that's fine, and I'll, I'll go ahead and do that, and thank you for the suggestion, but in the meantime, there's other ways that this town, I, I, I'm sorry, but I, I don't believe that it's just this affordable housing is the reason that that particular place is being developed. There has to be also a financial gain for the, for the town, and I just-
That's simply not true. Sorry. I'm not gonna let you say that.
All right, well, then I apologize for the, for the, for the incorrect statement. However, I just don't understand why it has to all be in one spot, why you have to, there's no other places in town. I'm not saying, you have a permit, do what you want. It's your land, go for it, but do we have to put that many houses in that one spot?
This is, these, this is not the only spot in the township where these are being considered. The process is moving along, and there will be others of these types of ordinances elsewhere in the township over a period of time that this municipality may also have to address, similar to the ones we're looking at this evening. I can indicate, and I will concur with Mr. Delkor, the last thing this municipality is getting is somehow a financial benefit out of allowing any of these developments to happen. And therefore, we, we are going to bear the cost to go with it, but frankly, we, bearing it in this manner is significantly better than being told to have to build significantly more units all over the township with a lot more people in the township than we necessarily want here.
Okay. I understand. How do you mitigate the fact that there's an aqua four and that there's gonna be potential flooding? I mean, where do, where is our protection that the state is mandating? We do this for affordable housing, and then we're stuck 25, I just heard them say about this other place, the wall's good for 25 years, so the ink dries and everybody walks away, and I'm nearing retirement, and all of a sudden I have flooding that I never had before, or impervious pavement, and now my well breaks, and I don't have the money to fix it.
All right. We are at the beginning of the process. When and if this is adopted, when and if an applicant comes before this Board and asks to develop the site, one of the obligations under the law is that they have to have a stormwater management plan that basically not only does not increase flow from the property off-site, but actually reduces the flow of stormwater off the property onto other sites such as yours, irrespective of the amount of impervious coverage. So, part of the obligation of anyone who would build on this site would be to meet the requirements of the state law regarding stormwater management.
It happens with every development and every site application.
I know.
It's part of the requirement.
I understand that, but-
I understand it's an emotional issue.
It's, it's not an emotional issue, it's a financial issue.
Oh, but, but let me, let me address something that you said also. You would be very surprised in terms of some of the affordable housing units in the township itself. You wouldn't even know the difference. I live down the road from an affordable housing unit. It's well-maintained, the people, you know, are, work, you know, nine to five. It's just a matter of the fact that it's an affordable housing unit, but, you know, it's as good as any unit I've seen in this township. So, again, I don't wanna paint a blanket with all of them, but for the most part, you know, from what I've seen, they're very, you know, well-maintained, and it's just part of the landscape, and you probably would be surprised in terms of some of that. So, you, you just can't connotate, you know, with a blanket statement that all of these things are just, you know, deteriorating shacks and that type of thing.
Well, let me clarify. I never said deteriorating shacks.
Well-
Number two, my issue is not affordable housing. My issue is the volume of housing that's gonna be put on. Number three, I can imagine the landscape, because right now, my landscape is a farm. And number four, I don't understand, and again, this is a, this is a lack of knowledge on my part, I have plans on my phone of a design, and there's like 500 parking spots, so I don't understand why everyone's saying if and when it happens. There's a, there's like plans, an architect's plans. There's building B and A, and there's gonna be a parking lot in my backyard, so I don't understand how we're saying if this happens, when this happens. There's a plan already. So, to clarify, I do not have a problem with affordable housing. I don't know where that came up. I'm asking you to consider some things that may become an issue, like you would need more schools, maybe you need more police. I'm, I am stymied by the volume of housing, affordable housing, expensive housing, I don't care what kinda housing. 495 units, that's, that's forever changing the landscape of Hillsborough.
So, just to, the reason for that number, just so we're, we understand the process, is that generally, the projects have somewhere between 20 and 25 percent set aside in the project, meaning for every three houses, for every four houses, three are affordable, I mean, three is, or mark in one is affordable. So, out of a 400-unit development, 100 units would be affordable.
Again, my issue is not the pricing. I don't think there's any affordable housing in New Jersey, so that's a, but the-
You'd be surprised.
Well, I would like to know where to go, but anyway.
You can, you can check the county website, keep track of it.
My issue's not the affordable housing. My issue is that this affordable housing is bringing on an astronomical amount of housing, period, and we are going to overrule the school systems. If we keep at this pace, Hillsborough is not going to be one of the best places to live.
You're missing the point, though. It's not our choice. We would love to say no. It's not our choice. This is mandated by the state. So, you're, you're shooting the guy that's getting beat up already. We'd love to say no, but the state of New Jersey says, every municipality, this is the number. It's been in courts for years. This guy right here trying to fight for smaller numbers, because in a lot of ways, we agree with you, but it's not our decision, ma'am. We'd love to say 100, 50, whatever. It's not our choice. It's not even your choice.
I'm well aware of that.
So, you know, you're barking, I'm sorry, you're barking up the wrong tree. We can't control that number.
We can mitigate it. We can try to do what we can and try to limit the number, but the state's gonna tell us this is the number we gotta come up with.
Well, we're going to ask, I speak on behalf of the neighborhood, that you folks partner up with us and show us how to go through this process, because we don't know, and I'm not barking. I'm, I'm a concerned citizen.
Well, I meant, you're, no, I may have been wrong, but you're, you're asking us to, to do things that we really don't have control on.
Well, I'm asking, I started the statement by saying that I don't know anything, you know, and I need some help here.
Well, again, we're trying to educate you.
Okay, and I appreciate that.
As we go through the process, we address all the things that you're concerned about. I mean, it is a process.
Well, it seems that this is a process on paper, but again, no one's addressing the fact that I have plans, so the process seems like it's already-
There's no, there's no plan submitted to the township, so I don't know where you're getting the plans from.
I have them, if you'd like to look at them.
There's a difference between a concept plan and a formal application. So, I think as we've indicated, there's clearly an idea of what would go there. That's how numbers come up. That's how we can figure out how many units you could fit on a particular piece of property, but there's no application until the, this process goes forward, where we establish what could be permissible on the land, and then that, the township committee, which I sit on, is, is one that would approve that. Then, you have a zone, and then a site application has to come in, and then all of the issues that you get, that you talk about, whether it's stormwater runoff, or traffic, or economic impact to the, to the community, all of that gets addressed during the hearings that go on with the site plan. But, that's not where we are today. This is just the, really the first step in the process to allow us to meet the obligations that are gonna be placed on us.
Well, I thank you for your time, and this is our first step too, because we will be at all these meetings, and Mr. Delkor, I appreciate you've been quite informative. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we're still on the left side, next to last pew. Anyone on, or on the left side, like, to come up? Okay, so now we'll go to the right side. Number one, Susan Gulliford Hunt Club Place.
We're gonna make, we're gonna let you sit even tonight. I know you must. I'm gonna let you sit tonight, Susan.
Susan Gulliford Hunt Club Road. As Mr. Delkor and Mr. Bernstein both went into the history of this, I was here on December 4th, 2008, when Jennifer Beam made her overall presentation to the township regarding our COA housing obligations. At that time, we were still developing, planning, the three that are now under development, the one that's going up at Valley and 206, the one that's going up near the high school, and we had a third one called Amwell Road East that was supposed to, that has not started yet. That was the third one she mentioned. And one of the questions is, at that time, I know the number of affordable housing units being required by the township has been fluid over the years, as the court has changed their minds for the township. With these new affordable houses going in, will that lower the number that has, that might be required at the one that's going up next to Pine, that might go up next to Piney Woods?
Yes.
It might lower that obligation at that spot?
As part, as part of the overall concept, which not only includes what might go here, what might go on the next item, what is already being built, we are trying to, I'll, I go back even further than Susan, as you are well aware. I've been the board attorney since 2000. I was here for the last round. This has been, unfortunately, folks, I'll play a little history lesson. The township has an oblig, the, what was euphemistically called the second round of obligations under Mount Laurel, under the affordable housing law, expired in 1998. We are still within what is being euphemistically called Round Three and Round Four, which the courts have determined to be, we're supposed to be 1998, we're supposed to be 1998 to 2005, and then 2005 and beyond. We are now in the 1998 to 2025 round, of which the Supreme Court has indicated that because the Council on Affordable Housing and other state agencies have failed to do their job, they had to step in two years ago and get involved. They recently rendered a decision, the second time, indicating that the obligation was not only a going-forward obligation, 2012 to 2025, but backwards- only a going-forward obligation, 2012 to 2025, but backwards from 1998 to 2012, what you may have seen in the papers called the gap period. The township is one of the few towns in this visonage, and it's a regional and a visonage, the township is part of a, of a court jurisdiction that's Monmouth, pardon me, Somerset, Warren, and Hunterdon, though the region governing affordable housing is Middlesex, Somerset, and Hunterdon. We have one of the few towns in the visonage and in the region that actually has been creating affordable housing all along. And we are trying very hard to convince the special master and the court, much to the chagrin of others, that that obligation, as well as what we are talking about going forward, is sufficient to meet our needs through 2025, of which the developments that Ms. Gulliford indicated are part of those numbers. But it's a large number, unfortunately, because of the period of time we're talking about, a period of time that we didn't create, the state did, and apparently, whether we like it or not, as Mr. Delkor has indicated and others, we have an obligation to meet. And the, the citizen who just came up commented that the property she's talking about is a farm, absolutely correct. That's part of the problem. We have a lot of open space, we have a lot of vacant land still here in Hillsborough Township that we are trying to maintain as much of in an open capacity as possible. But it cuts both ways. It's a benefit to allow us to continue to keep open and it is an opportunity for developers to develop because there is land to develop. So we are trying to balance, along with advocacy groups such as the Fair Share Housing Center, who basically believe that any piece of open land is developable, is fair for development, which we disagree with as well. So, yes, it seems like a lot, yes, it's a lot of situations, there will be others. We are trying to minimize it, we are trying to reduce our obligation, we are trying to convince the court ultimately that the plan we will put together meets our obligations without overburdening because the other piece of the puzzle, folks, that we face is every developer of every property who has affordable housing will tell you when they come here or will tell you when they don't come here, when they talk to us, that they can't make any money building affordable housing units. And what the courts did in the last round was give them, under a builder's remedy, a Many of you, I assume, are familiar with the hills up in Bedminster? That is the state's largest affordable housing project. That project was built because a developer came to Hill, to Bernard, to Bedminster and Bernadeville and the like and said, if you don't let us build what we want, if you, we are ready, willing, and able to build all of your affordable housing needs. Now, as you go up the hill there, you will not find affordable housing. The affordable housing is in some measure a long route 202, 206, and you can see the difference in the housing. The point is, that's the largest development because the township, all three municipalities were left with no alternative but to allow that to happen. We are trying, through this mechanism and others, to avoid that. And there are people who want to develop in this town, folks, who want to build another hills. And we are trying to avoid that amongst others.
Well, the one at Valley and 206, of course, has the same concept, he put the low-income housing is right along the highway, the, the affordable housing, the market rate is further back from the highway, so we've got the same thing happening there.
But not to, not to the extent, and that's the problem.
Well, the reason I asked the question was because we have the 50 acres at Valley and 206, we have 29, whatever it was, the Amwell Road, one near the high school, and the other, the third spot was only 10 acres, so the people there were thinking, well, they're really going to be cramming it in there. That's why I was asking, might this relieve some of the units that were proposed there?
Those are already approved, but we're trying, using those units to try to reduce the overall additional units.
Okay, because at that time, it was 108 affordable family rental units, although I know it's changed a lot since 2008. Okay, I have one other question, you said you've, the township has been approached by a prospective developer.
Uh huh.
Is this prospective developer involved in any other affordable developments currently being built?
In this town?
In this town, I'm sorry, okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Now, on these two specific, may I ask questions about both of them or did you only want one?
One, this one.
Okay, so block 180?
Uh huh.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, how many acres is that? I couldn't tell from what I was looking at.
How much, Dave, how many, about 90?
It's over 90 acres.
It's 90 plus, okay, I just couldn't tell from what I was looking at. Is there a certain density per acre that we're looking at? A lot of people in the neighborhood are really worried about feeling like it's being crammed in. Is there a certain number of like units per acre or something we can maybe make it understandable?
There's not, it's doesn't, it's not addressed as a density per se, it's, it's a maximum residential units of 465.
Right.
And if you do the math over the, the 90-plus acres, you come up to density.
You just do it that way, okay.
Yes, and it's also further restricted to only 30% of the property, so 70% of those, roughly 100 acres, would have to remain open.
Okay, and this one, the one we're discussing, block 180.01, will all these lots probably be merged later? That'll be something at site plan, right? Okay, so it blocked...
It is one large piece of property to split into a number of tax lots right now.
Okay, but the merging, should this pass, would happen in the future?
That's up to, that's up to the developer, actually.
Um, but this one is only residential, correct? This is the multifamily inclusionary district, okay.
Correct.
We'll get to the other one later. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Same side of the pew, next row.
Hey, Sean. John Mata, 23 Brook Drive. I really do not want an entrance off of Terror Drive, that's my biggest grief, okay? You're saying it's going to be for emergency only, but if you look at the traffic on 206 between Mountain View Road and Bellmead Bridge, that's an emergency every night. And the Hillsborough bypass is going to do nothing to help that. Okay, how do we know it's only going to be for emergency use?
Because the ordinance calls for it only to have emergency use.
And is that going to be written in stone?
It's going to be written in a town, if this ordinance is ultimately adopted, the ordinance calls for only emergency vehicle access from Terror Drive.
Why do they even need emergency access there when you have 206?
Because the law requires, I hate to say this, though, because, the law requires two ingress and egress on properties.
You can't have two ingresses off of 206?
There's not a second place to place a second ingress and egress on that property.
Okay. Also, how is it that the last property on Terror Drive, I believe it's not near 31, is zoned residential? You're going to put a roadway through that for emergency use, one of the zoned residential?
If the application comes forward, there will be a spot that will have to require an access to Terror Drive.
And the zoning will have to be changed for that?
Zoning doesn't have to be changed.
It has to be an easement, right?
Has to be an easement.
So you can put a roadway through a residential lot without changing the zoning, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Also, how is that property being, being, that last property being assessed at, it's residential, but it's being assessed at formerly in value?
I can't answer the question at this moment.
And it's paying taxes of $2 a year, how can that be taking place?
I can't answer the question, we'll look into it.
And I think the reason people are so upset is because they've spent a lot of money on drawing these plans as if this is already a done deal. Even though you come here and you say that this is only preliminary stages, we know from history how Hillsborough operates and that's, that's the concern of a lot of people.
What does that mean? Can you, can you help me understand that? What does that mean?
There's been a lot of backdoor deals in Hillsborough through the years.
I'm sorry, I don't disagree, I...
Fine, but...
You can say that all you like.
But a lot of money has been spent on something that you say is in preliminary and is up in the air, whether it will even be approved or not. That's my concern, somebody has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars already on planning this development that, that you tell me may not even happen.
That's correct, because two things have to happen, sir. One, the ordinance has to ultimately be adopted, and two, assuming it is adopted, the planning board's got to approve the development. So if somebody wants to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars putting concept plans together on the possibility it will never be built, that's their call.
Okay.
We're not expending those dollars, that's, that's the applicant doing that.
I understand that, but like I say, one of the biggest concerns is that, that you want to put that, there's this access on Terror Drive, and every, if that access is ever opened up, you know darn well, everybody does everything possible to avoid 206.
Yeah, but I, I think you're, I think you're considering it to be a, you know, an open thoroughfare that people are going to be providing access to, and that's not the intent of the...
It will be written in stone that it's only for emergency use, correct?
Correct, emergency access.
The proposed, the proposed ordinance, sir, primary vehicular access to the site shall be from Route 206, vehicular access to and from Terror Drive shall be limited to emergency vehicles. And what is conceptualized here is not what you would consider to be a road, but some kind of...
Like a pathway or...
Pathway to allow emergency access.
Okay, and if they ever decide to change that to a regular access?
They can.
They, meaning...
They, they, a developer to change it would need approval, to change the ordinance, and approval from a future board to do so.
And then that, we would all be notified of that change?
Of course.
Absolutely.
Even though I live more than 200 feet from that, from that Terror Drive entrance?
Everyone in the...
Within 200 feet would.
Of Terror Drive entrance or of the whole development?
Of Terror, of the Terror Drive entrance.
So that, that equates to one person would be notified?
I...
It would be from the property.
From the property line.
It would be too much...
All, tight property line.
But there's different lots?
No, no, it's one tract.
One tract.
So now you're considering it one lot, okay, correct.
One tract.
Okay.
We're not considering it one lot, we're considering it one tract, which is called multiple lots.
Okay, that's my concern, thank you.
Trust me, sir, it's also ours.
Okay, we're going to, after Nexon, the lady's been trying to go, you guys keep cutting, but go ahead.
Do you want to go?
Nope, go ahead, I'm just, I'm just telling the people behind not to go, have a seat. Name, spell your last name, address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Brian Geniton, G E N I T O N, I would be the resident at 15 Brook Drive.
Okay.
I would also be the, probably the newest person on Brook Drive, um, basically your future. You guys did a great job of selling me on Hillsborough too, my wife and I, my wife will be delivering in about four weeks our first child.
Congratulations.
We are, thank you. We are thrilled to be at Hillsborough. Under your leadership, Mr. Delkor, I would actually read every Friday your memos, and I still read the memos today. My wife and I love Hillsborough. Many people do, everyone behind me does, and every single person in front of me does as well. You wouldn't be here if you did not care, you would not be here if you did not love Hillsborough, every one of you do. So I should start by saying that I'm a special interest. I won't lie, I'm a special interest. I especially am interested in my neighbors, who I love, my town, who I, who, who I've grown in the past three years to love and plan on spending a very long time here. So I understand the passions and I get it, because I feel that way too, and I'm sure that you do as well. I understand that you have obligations from the state. All I'm asking is that, is that we consider where those obligations go, and again, because I have a special interest and I won't lie about it, I'm asking you to move those obligations away from my home. I'm not going to lie, I want my child to grow up in an area that's safe, Hillsborough's safe. I do have concerns about traffic, and I understand that Terror is supposed to be closed and, you know, I'm hoping God willing, for the next 40 years it remains closed. Um, I'm hoping for the next 40 years that we can all look at this and say, everything will be fine. But I can't bank on it, and that's why I'm here. I understand that we have to deal with this problem, I'm simply asking that we take consideration in regards to where we're placing it. And I've also looked at, you know, the legal aspects to it. I do have concerns about the value of my home, my neighbors' homes, I know that some of them are on the older side, they may need to sell at some point, what will happen to their home values, what will happen to my home value? Will it depreciate in value? How great will the depreciation be? What are my options if they do depreciate in value? I know that you guys, men and women, probably have the same concerns about your neighborhoods as well. Hillsborough was a rising town. Like I said, you sold me and you sold me very well on it. I thi, I ask that you consider that. Hillsborough's school districts are amazing and I want them to continue to be. Hillsborough's commerce is wonderful, I would want it to continue to be. I just ask that you consider and think about the decisions that we're making. And again, like I said, I'm a special interest. I certainly don't want things in my neighborhood that would harm my neighbors, myself, my future child. And I don't want there to be that problem. I know that you guys have to deal with the state requirements, the state mandates, I'm sort of then, you know, you guys have carried that burden, I'm sorry that you have to. I'm simply asking, though, that you consider the people behind me, they're wonderful people. And I'm asking that you consider where you place this, because that's going to affect me for the next 40 years, 50 years, it's going to affect my child or hopefully my children down the road. Please consider this. Unfortunately, you're going to have to put up with me for a long time, and I prefer not to be adversarial. So thank you for giving me my moment, thank you for considering my words, thank you for all that you do, but please consider what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Good evening, Barbara Sims, I live at 28 Brook Drive, I've lived in Hillsborough since I was five. I graduated from Hillsborough, both of my children are graduate, graduated from Hillsborough. I've lived on Brook Drive for better than 15 years. It has always been a place where I can go and find peace and relaxation. With this development going where it's going right now, which is right next door to my house, there will be no peace and relaxation. I sit in my backyard, I see nothing but trees, I have wetlands behind my house, it's great. I see animals all the time, they will be gone when they, when they put up the 450 homes or 462. I was on Sunnymead Road last week, in the houses that they're building on Falcon Road in the corner there, I watched a herd of 30 deer, now it's, it's, it was kind of amazing to me, I watched a herd of 30 deer run from that building development, those houses, across the road and heading out for, looking for more places to live. Yeah, deer can be a nuisance, but we are running them off of all the property here. Some of my other concerns that I have right now is the school budget.
Can you just come up close to the mic, please?
Sorry, the school budget. Right now, they, they have a tough time making, with proper resources. I certainly hope that you have a plan for that in the future with wanting to build all these homes, I know you're going to have, you're going to build them someplace. I look at the property that you're building them on and in my eyes, it's small. I just heard the other day that it was better than 450 units and then I was at all, I could not believe that that was going to go into that corner. When you look out past Autton Road, look out past Autton Road School, look at that property out there, it's not being developed. Past Valley Road, off that corner there, why is, why, why do we have to cram all of the low income, go from Valley Road to Amwell Road and look what's been built in the past five years? Okay, now, we're just going to stretch out a little bit. Years ago, we fought the car wash going behind our house, Grasso's Car Wash, and we were told at that point, we fought for a couple of years, we were told if there's nothing legally wrong, there's nothing we could do or say. So at least the neighborhood that we have here can come up and voice their opinions about what's going to happen to our neighborhood. Yeah, this emergency exit for Terra Drive, and we all know, if a developer comes in there and talks enough talk, that the township will bend and say, well, maybe we could change that, you know? And it might not be two years from now, but it might happen five years from now. As a concerned resident, as a resident who's lived here almost all my life, I watched Hillsborough go from absolutely no apartments, no condos, no nothing, to way overpopulated. You can't go from, as soon as you hit Valley Road, maybe a little farther along, you know, maybe you can get to the Coles intersection or Triangle Road, you could say, we're in Hillsborough now, because you stop. Peak hours, you stop, and you sit there. When that ballpark went in, in the past three weeks, gone out to my road, I get to the end of Brook Drive, and I stopped. And guess what? I sit and I wait for two lights. Not one, you know, one is even excessive, especially when it's six in the morning, I'm going to work. But the ballpark alone, I've seen a major increase. You put 450 units back there, it is going to destroy Mountain View, Brook Drive, it's just the whole area down that way. Traffic from 206 going into Hillsborough, that little end down there, it gets tight. The center of Hillsborough is horrible. And that bypass, it's gonna be done after 2020. They got a little piece of it done. So that's doing, that's serving really no purpose at this point. So your future plans for the town, our taxes are going up, our taxes, our school taxes are, I think, I feel like at least 75% of my taxes are towards education. It's only gonna go up, because the school budget can't be met, having all of these people moving into Hillsborough. Let's see, I just want to be sure I touch base on everything I have in my head. I think my biggest thing was, in fact, one, yes, and you said it's proposed. We all know the meaning of proposed, that's all it is. You know, I have a proposed date, but I didn't meet that date. Well, that's because it was proposed. So I think, as a person that lives in the neighborhood and as a person that's in the Hillsborough community, I just can ask you, please, think about what you're gonna do in that little sector of land and to our development.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I'll give you the same advice I gave the other woman that came up. I would ask you to go, if you got a voice, go talk to people and try to...
No, I would, but I just don't have time.
Well, I, you know, I...
I'm sorry. I'm too busy working, making money to pay my taxes.
You're coming here, I mean, it's...
I understand, but my issue is...
I have a hard time in Hillsborough. I can't even have my own daughter move back here, because she could grab her floor.
Hold on, dear, have a seat.
I'm good.
No, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break, give our stenographer a chance to catch up. So we'll reconvene at...
9:10.
9:10. We are now back in session. It's 9:10. There was the next person up on the right that would make some comments. Please, take your time, have a seat, say your name and your address, please.
My name is Edith Levy on 6 Arthur Road, Hillsborough, naturally.
Yes.
I have a whole list of things that I was going to say, but I didn't realize that everybody in my neighborhood did not get that map that we, Arthur Road, got the map, which is almost impossible to see. But I'm only gonna mention a few things. I have a whole list of things that I'd like to mention, but it's too early in the game.
Okay.
Number one, on this map, it shows the garbage and recycle is gonna be in back of the house next door to me.
What map are you referring to, ma'am?
It's of this property on...
So some conceptual plan that you saw that we haven't seen?
Was sent to all of us.
Well, it wasn't sent by us.
Oh, well, I don't have one with me.
I'm going to get, over the past year, perhaps, the owner of the property has been going through processes with DEP and DOT for various reviews and approvals. We've received copies of those concepts as well, but they are just that, they are not official plans.
Well, that's, I understand, that's just a concept. And it's a horrible thing, but I'm just mentioning this. Be careful where that garbage gets put. There's another, the whole other side of that property has trees, and it's near the Montgomery Line, maybe it is that. It can go there, no houses, no building is gonna be there, but they put the garbage in back of the houses, and I don't like that. So just keep that in mind, that's one thing. Then the other thing is, there are these parking garages gonna be there, one in back of my house will be, according to this concept. Now, I don't know what kind of lighting this is 24/7, but I really don't like to have lights on all night long. You know, it's a big field, and if there's these parking garages, wherever they are, will be lit up all night, like daylight. So just keep that in mind when you're looking at all these things. Now, the other thing is, next to me, between Nillos and Brook Drive, there's an easement, and in that easement is the sewer. My property goes at an angle. I don't see a street there at all. I was told in 1959 that there was just a paper street and it was gonna be gone. Well, I don't know if it's not there yet, but it better be gone. That's all I want to say. I'll let the others talk.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Levy.
And we swing the other way, Nate. What's your name, sir?
Adam Sims. I live on 28 Brook Drive.
Okay.
I just had a couple of questions to ask. I just wanted to know if there were...
Just kinda speak closer to the mic, Adam.
I want to just pull the mic a little closer to you, that'll...
There you go.
Okay. I wanted to know if there were any other lots considered for the area rather than that lot, because I know we have other spaces in Hillsborough, such as across from 206, where it meets Mountain View. It's a big, open area, and I don't understand why the housing units would have to be put on the farmland and not in an open area where there's not farmland.
I guess the issue is, we don't really control where ultimately the developers will want to, one, they can get access to land, I mean, because there's an owner of land, and they have to be willing to deal with that land and be able to create something. So there has to be access to the property, so that's not something we control, that's an arrangement between the two parts. The issues that we're talking about here are one of, if that, you know, in order to meet the obligations that we have, there are a number of properties that are being considered for development that would contribute to our affordable housing obligation. So this is not the only one, there are, you know, there's several that are under consideration, but this just applies to this particular one.
All right. And then additionally, I wanted to know if, say, it was established and the lot was put there, would there be any accommodations, such as fences or trees between the neighborhoods? For example, I live right on the corner, and if I were to walk out my front or back door, it'd be one of the first things I would see, would be all those buildings there.
That would be discussed when we actually have a site plan and an application in front of us, but that's fairly customary in these circumstances. But it's something that would be discussed at the site plan time.
All right. Thank you, that is all.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else on the right side? Okay. I'll go back to the left, is there anything else before we close public on this one? Okay. Motion to close public on this?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. What's the pleasure of the board?
So can I just maybe give everyone, so everyone's clear on the, sort of, the process from here? Because one of the things that we do do here in Hillsborough, it's a bit unique. I don't think it's required, but we want to give the opportunity for everyone to have the chance to be heard and for multiple opportunities to come forward. So we do this conceptual discussion. It will then go to the Township Committee, and it'll be on the agenda for Township Committee for introduction and review. And then, if there's ever a site plan or application, it will be back here with notice. So there will be multiple times, including at the Township Committee, which is a separate board, obviously, from this one, to, that would discuss this ordinance, this zoning plan, and then in the future, at an application time. So I just want everyone to know, there will be multiple steps in the process for you to come forward and be heard, or make recommendations, or comment, or whatever you like to do. This is not the only opportunity you're gonna get.
Anything? Anything else, sir?
Pleasure of the board is to forward this on to the governing body? Or you can put it on in the Q and one meeting?
Does that have to be official, a motion, or just a motion? Yeah.
Well, I think that it behooves us to move it up to them so that they can review it and have more discussion, both with them and with the public, and then bring it back to us. So obviously, this is a very tender topic, but it's trying to at least take this property and put it under some guidelines, that if by any chance everything ever happened, right, we would have the ability to control what's built there. So I would take a motion to move this up to the committee for further review.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to forward this on to the Hillsborough Township Committee for their review and comment.
Okay. Second?
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Moreno?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Laton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the other zoning ordinance for this evening, and I emphasize that because this board may be seeing others of these in other spots in the township in the short and medium-term future, is for Block 202, Lot 4, for the multi-use inclusionary district, which is a piece of property along the bypass, also the proposal of a 24% affordable housing parameter, a combination of residential and commercial, on a minimum 28-lot acreage, with a maximum total impervious coverage of 45%, of which the building coverage is 20%. Total number of dwelling units not to exceed 175 units. Retail, office, restaurant fiduciary of not to exceed 20,000 square feet. And a right-of-way off of Route 206 off the bypass. What is being euphemistically called the MUID, Mixed Use Inclusionary District.
This unit here, or this tract there, was, they have enough frontage to have more than one access onto 206? Because I don't see anything in there.
I believe that's the case.
I believe they're gonna be restricted to one access.
Because of the right-of-way.
Because of the right-of-way?
The access is on all 206, and it's an emergency off the right-of-way. It looks like, because I guess they're bound by the east by the railroad.
You got the...
Now, is that, Mr. Chairman, I guess, looking at the map, it's on the back of our package, it looks like where the bypass comes in, I understand that's supposed to connect into Mountain View, so... It looks like on the map that I have, that where the proposed bypass, which would come in to Mountain View Road, is my understanding, would bisect this property, David?
No, the bypass would be just to the north of this property.
Just to the north of it. So it doesn't connect to Mountain View Road, it connects further north.
This parcel, right, correct.
Maybe I'm not seeing it, I mean, you're looking at this?
I see what you're saying.
I mean, it shows me Mountain View Road.
I know what you're saying. The bypass would be just to the north of this property. I believe that drawing may be incorrect, the map, but the bypass has not split the property, if that's the question.
But the bypass comes into Mountain View Road, does it not?
Yes.
Then this drawing is incorrect, then, at least.
The lot, yes, that is.
Okay. That's why I was confused, though.
Yeah, okay.
Because it's shaded in red north of Mountain View Road.
I think you get a better view if you look at the aerial map that was attached to the cover memo.
Is that the one that's shaded in yellow?
Yeah, see, that, I see what, now I see what happened.
Because the yellow one is wrong, too.
The tax map, there was, there's really two lots there that shouldn't have been entirely... The lot line is incorrect on the attached tax map, but if you look at the aerial map, the bypass would be just to the, again, just to the north of that.
Okay.
Because that's actually shaded up even?
Yeah, yeah. That, I apologize for that, but it is definitely to the south of the bypass.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Part of that lot is incorrect.
No, we'll correct that.
All right, thank you.
The biggest difference between this, this mixed use, is it's allowing some sort of also having some...
It's a mixed-use development, you know?
Yeah, commercial use to it. But they're still gonna need the same co requirement? They build homes on there?
24%.
24%. And my other question is, is it required for them to build, other than housing units, some sort of other mixed-use stuff, or is it up to the proposed plan? It just gives them the ability to do that?
Yes.
The intent is not to be an all-residential development.
Right.
Understood.
But it's not a requirement?
Not as currently written.
Not as currently written.
What's not a requirement, sir?
For them to build some other mixed-use. But it would allow them, encourage them?
It would allow them to do that, yes.
All right. So we will make a motion open to public on this, on Block 202, Lot 4?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Say aye? Okay. So we'll take any questions from public, though we're diminutive in public. Susan, I guess, since you asked about this application in your last name, and so this will be regarding zone, Block 202, affordable housing zone, Lot 4.
Susan Gulliford-Hunt Club Road. You answered some of my questions. I had the same concerns as Mr. Wagner, that I thought that the 206 bypass appeared to be going directly, like bisecting the lot, but I guess in the future, there'll be something a little clearer that we can see. It's 28 acres? I thought it was more than that.
The total site is roughly 30, 34 acres.
Oh, okay, I was looking at this, and I couldn't understand why it was 28.
The minimum lot size is 28.
Okay. On the maximum building heights, I see on the first one, the maximum building height of 52 feet, I believe it is, will allow for three-story apartment buildings. That's the first one, 180.01. On this one, I see it's 45 feet, still three stories, though, right? Even though it's seven feet, it's just a design...
It's the design of the roof.
A design difference, okay. You answered all the other questions, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Okay. That was quick. Go down that one first. Motion to close public.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? All right. Okay, so what's our pleasure on this? Any amendments or changes?
Mr. Chairman, the intent of the ordinance is that the mixed use is truly a mixed use. So we're gonna have to make a couple minor modifications to the draft to ensure that the commercial aspect of it actually gets built.
That's my thoughts, yeah.
Versus the possibility of it getting built. The conversations we have had with the current property owner requires that to be part of it. And that's been the discussion, so to the extent we need to... And that's been the discussion, so to the extent we need to make modifications, we shall, but that has been the intent of this property being a mixed-use development.
So, that it can't just all be residential?
Correct.
So, they have to come up with some sort of minimum, or some sort of formula, some sort of...
One concept is, is commercial on first floor, residential above, a certain amount of standalone commercial.
Okay. So, we'll what, let's come back with that, then, or make a mod?
If you want to send it up to the committee, we can make that adjustment.
And then, on, okay. Good with that? So, we'll make a motion to move this up with the changes that the Counselor and Mr. Maskey have stated, putting more of a mandatory feel, using it as a true mixed use, not strictly as a housing project.
You can be able to do that, Counselor?
Good. I said Counselor and Mr. Maskey.
Yeah, well, I said Counselor him, separate apart.
Yeah. We have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
And a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Mr. Wysin?
Yes.
Mr. Carrina?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor? Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair LaTone?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the time of the planning board. Let me dispel a concept that was sort of raised by some of the public before. This is not gonna be the only two ordinances that you will see. We are in conversations relative to our obligations, not just for this part of town. And I'm assuming that as the process moves along, we will be asking the board to continue to review these kind of proposed ordinances.
Best is yet to come.
Yep.
Stay tuned.
Thank the Supreme Court, the state one, multiple times.
Would you like to cancel the business meeting on May 25th?
I will take a motion to cancel the business meeting on May 25th. I'll make that motion. Sad, boy, I figured you'd wake up down there. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? So, June 1st will be the next meeting, and there's no correspondence, I will, at this point, take a motion for adjournment?
So moved to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. 8:30.